Okay, I'll call the Special Board of Alderman meeting to order on Thursday, January 2, 2020 at 7:05 PM in the Aldermanic Chamber. City Clerk will offer the prayer and Alderman Tenza will lead us to the pledge to the flag.
Okay, Almighty God, we have the three, if you know it, you may, I don't have it in front of me.
Almighty God, we have the high honor and serious duty to manage the affairs of our fellow beloved city, fill so God with the spirit of justice and charity for all so that all our decisions may be for the betterment and greater happiness of all our fellow citizens, so help us, God, amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America.
And to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Before I ask the Clerk to take the role, Alderwoman Shoshana Kelly and Alderman Rick Dowd are participating by telephone. Under the terms of the state law that allows them to do so, they need to explain why they can't attend, if they can hear us, and who they are with, if anyone. Alderwoman Kelly.
I am out of town, I can hear you and I am not with anybody.
Thank you, Alderman Kelly. Alderman Dowd.
Yes, I'm also out of town and I'm by myself, I can hear you.
Okay, thank you. Would the Clerk please call the role?
Alderman O'Brien.
President.
Alderman Gidge.
President.
Alderman Harriet Gathright.
President.
Alderman Dowd.
President.
Alderman Cleese.
Here.
Alderman Laws.
President.
Alderman Lopez.
[coughs]
Alderman Karen.
Here.
Alderwoman Kelly.
Here.
Alderman Jettie.
Here.
Alderwoman Malizzi-Golia.
Present.
Alderman Tenza.
Present.
Alderman Schmidt.
Here.
Alderman Clemmons.
Here.
Alderman Wiltshire.
Here.
We have 14 present.
I just got a text from Alderman Lopez, he's on his way. Also in attendance are Mayor Donches and Corporation Counsel Steve Bolton. Before I do communication, I would, I told the mayor I would let him address the board and then Alderman Clemmons may have a motion.
Thank you, Madam President. Well, I know I'm outnumbered, 20, I see 15 Aldermen, six or seven people from the Police Department, but I'm asking the 20 people that are here to consider compromising and working with me on this. Now, we had two contracts come before us and I expressed reservations about those contracts for reasons that I've explained but I will briefly go into. We have, we had two contracts before us and we, at the same time, are facing a serious problem with healthcare. Now, we now project $6 million over two years, that alone is 3% on the tax rate. 20% increase in a single line item. This puts pressure on the budget, serious pressure on the budget. Last year you saw the taxes go up, the rest of the budget except for this one line item was up only a point and three quarters. This line item pushed the entire budget up to 3%, so it has a serious impact in the budget. And one thing that I'm concerned about is building into our budgets increases that in the end, at the end of the day, we cannot sustain and will reduce, will in the end of the day, result in reduced services. If we can only increase a budget 2 and 1/4, 2 and 1/2% in order to keep the tax rate at a level we think is acceptable, but we've built budgets that have to go up 3 or 4% in order to sustain current conditions, we now have an unsustainable budget and it will result in service reductions because there won't be enough to pay for the services that are currently being provided. We have been talking about this increase in healthcare for quite some time and it is not a surprise that fiscal '21 is going to go up a lot again. Ms. Kleiner and the city's expert went to the Budget Committee on July 22nd, just the 22nd day of the fiscal year, and projected a major increase for 2000 for fiscal '21. So we know we've got a serious problem that's more than one year, more than one year, two years, and it could go beyond that. In addition to that, you remember in the escrow process, we talked about this again, we put $2 million of funds in the escrow process into healthcare, then when we got the money from the state, we put another $900,000, so the idea that this is going up shouldn't be a surprise to anyone. Now, we've raised, in addition to the non-sustainable budgets, we've raised a couple of other issues. Number one, this does, these two contracts together definitely create a precedent and although some people have said, oh, well, it doesn't matter, it does in terms of negotiating other contracts which are in negotiations right now. Plus, we've got groups in City Hall who are beginning to, they're seeing what's going on and they're beginning now to petition through grievances for higher wages and a lot of, and other things are going on. So, I guess I'm asking, are you sure that we're wrong about all this? Are you sure that, that when I say that this is establishing a precedent that we're going to have to follow with other employee groups, are you sure that I'm wrong? And are you sure you don't want to take the time to, if you don't believe me, to talk with the people who negotiate these contracts and find out? That could, that could occur, discussion regarding negotiations could occur in a non-public session. And are you sure, and one thing that I want to add is that as we look at this budget and the next ones, I think people are going to be, I think you're going to see that to sustain what we have, we're going to have tax rates, at least in this coming year, and if you do this enough for a series of years, that go up far more than people are used to. And then, I mean, some of you have not been in an environment where the tax rate becomes an issue because I think we have maintained some degree of stability and we've exercised fiscal discipline so that we haven't seen the tax rate become an issue, but if it goes up 4% or 5% a few years in a row, like, you know, my experience tells me it will become an issue. So, are you so sure we're wrong? I'm trying to work with you and I'm trying to compromise with you. You proved two contracts, I said we should limit to 2%, okay. I didn't veto one of them, the officers, we have a great police department, I don't argue with any of their police activities, they're doing a fantastic job, I'm just thinking about the financial management of the department and the city. So are you so sure that we should, this has to be rushed through now? You sure you don't want to take the time to at least hear from the people who do negotiations in Public Works, in the Fire Department, in City Hall, to find out before you make the decision that I am absolutely wrong? Are you sure that you don't want to talk to them? And if you think that I'm wrong about the tax rate, are you sure you don't want to bring in CFO Griffin, Ms. Kleiner, Dave Fridette, and the other people who work on the budget to kind of explain and, and give you, we could give you figures, projections as to what you're looking at? Are you so sure you want to decide so quickly that we are wrong? I'm trying to work with you, okay, we let the supervisors go through, but creating two precedents is worse than one. So, so I, and I, and I do question the, the Police Commission here and, you know, they're fine citizens and they're trying to do what they think is best for the department, but I raised an issue about the extension of an unfunded liability, which is payouts for sick time. We pay at a certain level, but the city fought for 20 years to buy that, bring that, bring that expenditure, that unfunded liability, meaning a commitment that has no money behind it, bring that down. It started in around 2001, for 17 years the city fought to, so when the bill came before us last year and again when the, this commission agreed to extend, in the first version of this contract, the unfunded liability, making, almost doubling the city's obligation to pay out when people resign or leave for retirement, so that they get, the proposal was to give them about a third of their pay in payout of unused sick time as a maximum. I've raised that for a long time as a problem. So, the commission, so you balked at that because this came up right in November or late October, you balked at it. I said you should, some of you agreed, at least at that moment, and so the contract was not passed, it was not rejected, but it wasn't passed, and it was sent back to the commission. Then they removed most of that, there's still a little bit of an increase, which we could get into, but they removed most of that, but then increased the wages from a little over 9% to a little over 11%. I mean, is that a reasonable approach? Shouldn't they at least have been, come back to, if, shouldn't they at least have come back to me or you and said, well, which one, you know, we can do one or the other? I mean, the first contract was clearly better than this one for the city. So, we're now faced with a worse contract because we balked at increasing the city's unfunded liability. So, look, I'm trying to work with you, I'm trying to compromise, I'm trying to be reasonable, I'm trying to tell you what I think is coming, and if you don't believe me, if you just think it's all, you know, hogwash, tax rate's not going up, healthcare's not a problem, this doesn't create any kind of precedent, are you sure you want to reach that conclusion without hearing the people who are actually involved in these issues? So, based on that, I'm asking you to work with us. You can still pass it next year. If you listen to people who are knowledgeable about all this and you, you think that they are all wrong, or if you disagree that, you know, it's important to give this raise regardless of the consequences, holding this till next year is not the end of the world. So, that's all I'm asking. I know I'm outnumbered 20 to 1. Some people said I shouldn't bother with any of this, why fight with the Aldermen and the Police Department? Not a bad point, but I am trying to work with you, I'm trying to do best for overall, I'm looking out into the future about what might happen with the taxes and what the city can afford and what's likely to, you know, what the voters and the people who pay for all this are likely to think. Reach a reasonable balance between raising taxes and paying people correctly and delivering services. So that's my pitch, I did go on longer than I expected, but I'm just trying to consult you as a partner in city government.
Thank you, Mayor. Alderman Clemmons.
Thank you. I would move to amend the agenda by opening up a public comment period.
Motion is to add a 15-minute public comment?
Yes.
A typical public comment period? That's the motion, discussion on that motion? To allow 15-minute comment period? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Roll call. Roll call. Alderman O'Brien.
Yes.
Alderman Gidge.
Yes.
Alderman Harriet Gathright.
Yes.
Alderman Dowd.
Yes.
Alderman Cleese.
Yes.
Alderman Laws.
Yes.
Alderman Lopez.
Yes.
Alderman Karen.
Yes.
Alderwoman Kelly.
Yes.
Alderman Jettie.
Yes.
Alderwoman Malizzi-Golia.
Yes.
Alderman Tenza.
Yes.
Alderman Schmidt.
Yes.
Alderman Clemmons.
Yes.
Alderman Wiltshire.
Yes.
We have 15 here. And that motion carries. So, I would welcome the public to give public comment, we have a 15-minute period. Give your name and address for the record, please.
Yes, Jim Tollner, One Sequoia Circle, and I'll just take about two minutes. I would like to start by thanking all of you for being here tonight to vote on this contract and those of you that are on the phone. This contract consists of 16 FDEs and its two fiscal years in arrears having expired in July 2018. The first proposal was vetoed last year around this time. I will be brief as the chief will go over what he's been asked to do, excuse me, and the changes that took place during these lengthy negotiations, so I will not duplicate his points. I would like to clarify a few comments that are out there. The Police Commission followed the required process that has been used by the city administration and previous Police Department commissions for over the last 20 years in negotiating and communicating these contracts. During this process, Corporation Counsel was involved, it was sent to finance to cost out, finance and administrative service processes information with the administration. We have never, never circumvented the process regarding this particular or any other contract during the numerous discussions and meetings that we've had with staff in the mayor's office over the last 18 months. I think we all would agree, the rising cost of healthcare has been a constant. It was an issue when I was an Alderman 14 years ago, it's not going to change, but the one thing I want you to know is that the commissioners are taxpayers as well and we share the same concern that the Board of Alderman does and the mayor. It is also our responsibility, like each of you around this horseshoe, as the mayor stated, and I quote, "to protect the citizens of Nashville by being mindful and appreciative of the outstanding service that all of the Nashville Police Department provides to our great city." To be clear, the commission shares and concurs with the mayor's comments regarding future budget concerns, stating such at the Police Commissioners' meeting on December 16th and again via voicemail on December 19th. I communicated to the mayor that he had the commitment of the commissioners and the PD that we will support his efforts and manage this, finding a balance moving forward. We welcome the opportunity to participate in future discussions, working in unison with the mayor's office, the Board of Alderman, and the uni, excuse me, and the unions in addressing challenges that lay ahead and the new contracts, new contracts that will come before us. In closing, at the last Board of Alderman meeting, you voted 15-0 to approve both of these police contracts. You also voted 15-0 to approve three bonding projects. Nothing has changed since that vote regarding either the bonding projects or the police contracts. We would respectfully request that you move forward and reconfirm your vote again, vote again supporting these contracts. Thank you very much.
My name is Michael Carrigan, spelled C-A-R-I-G-N-A-N. I'm the Chief of Police for the Nashville Police Department. First of all, I'd like to thank you all for coming tonight. I know it's been a very busy holiday season and this is a special meeting, not on your agendas for normal. I really appreciate you taking the time to come, to listen and consider the issue. As most of you know, this is my sixth time in front of you regarding this particular contract. I will be brief. I believe you all know me and know that I also believe that issues arise, as issues arise, I try to discuss and reach mutual acceptable compromises on everything. I've explained my rationale and answered every question to the Budget Review and full board, receiving unanimous approval at each. Nothing has changed from a week and a half ago. I would like to briefly address a couple of points in a veto message we've all received and was recently referenced in several media outlets. I will gladly answer any questions you have regarding this contract at any time tonight. One issue I'd like to address is the point regarding statements made by the Police Department that they had not been told about the problem of healthcare costs before negotiations are not accurate. These statements were accurate. The UFPO contract, which is in front of you tonight, has been outstanding for over a year and a half. I've been in front of you all five other times. We've been given guidance from the mayor and from the Aldermen many times, never once have we discussed the cost of healthcare concerning this contract, with the exception of the last Alderman meeting. Regarding the Supervisor's contract, which was recently approved, submission to the Board of Alderman was 12/19/2019. The contract negotiations were finalized on August 28, 2019. The union voted to approve 33 to nothing on September 8, 2019. The contract was redlined and finalized on roughly October 17. It was sent to CFO Griffin shortly thereafter. We received the costing back from the city on November 12. A week later, representatives for the mayor's office came to the Commissioners' meeting and spoke about the sick buyout and the preferred raises. Nothing was said at that meeting that night about issues involving healthcare costs and the impact this would have on the overall city budget. General statements made at state-of-the-city speeches or city budget speeches that healthcare is an issue for us moving forward does not really qualify to me as direction on how we negotiate contracts or what percentages should be. Furthermore, regarding the knowledge of a 19% increase in our healthcare budget is not really a fair statement due to the way our budget is prepared. The benefits are removed from the budget calculation of percentage increases, therefore we do not analyze the benefits, pension, or FICA Medicaid accounts. The budget calculation and the management for health benefits for the Police Department are not done by the PD Financial Services Division, they are managed by the city. The second point I'd like to discuss is the point when the Police Commission resubmitted the contract, we did not simply remove unused sick time buyout provisions as requested. Instead, we raised the wage increase from 9.5% to 11.25% over the four years. I'd like to address this issue, excuse me, I'd like to address this issue by stating that I've been in front of you five times. When I initially proposed this contract in front of you, I was operating under the guidance of the mayor's wishes to stay with under the proposed spending cap. I was able to do that using creative methods in which I'd done for two other contracts, which were both approved. When I submitted, the night I submitted this the first time, there were some issues involving other city employees that came to fruition as a result of contract was tabled. I was asked to reach a compromise, come back, talk to them, reach a compromise, I did that. I came back with a sick buyout program that was half of what every other member of my police department was receiving. They agreed to do so, they worked with me. I again proposed that to you, it was accepted through the Budget Review process. It was stalled again at the full Alderman meeting due to some concerned issues that came up that it was not enough. Sick buyout programs result in long-term unknown costs to the city and are not good. I was told by several members, several Aldermen that they would consider wage increases much better than they would like to see the sick use, the sick buyout programs. I was told by the mayor in the meeting that he believes we should pay the employees more, not the, not use a sick buyout program. So I went back to the table and we came back with a compromise and we took the majority of the sick buyout program away. So the program that every employee in my PD has, with the exception of members of this union, are no longer able to, to use that. Instead, we gave up that program with the exception of changing retirement, just retirement to retirement and resignation after 15 years. This was consistent with other contracts in the city and it's five years more than those contracts. They can resign after 10 years and get their sick buyout packages. For us, it is 15 years and it currently affects one employee. As a result of being asked to look at increasing the wages as opposed to getting rid of, using a sick buyout program, I went back to them and we did that. We came back with wage increases, which I thought were very reasonable. We did in fact go from 9.5% to 11.25% over the life of the contract. I did that based on what you asked me to do. That contract, we're talking about 1.75% over four years. That's less than a half a percent per year for these people. You asked me to come back with wage increases because they gave up that, that very lucrative sick buyout program that had future unknown costs to the city. They did that, they did it willingly, and they came back with a one point, I came back with them, with 1.75% increase over four years. Again, that's less than a half a percent. I think that's very reasonable. I've tried very hard to work with all of you to value your wishes and to be fiscally responsible to the city of Nashville. I very much admire the mayor, I agree with the programs he puts forward, I am more than willing to work with him on anything he does. I want to thank you very much for your time, I appreciate it. Have a great New Year.
Anyone else for public comment? Seeing none, Communications.
Communications been received from Lori Wiltshire, President, Board of Alderman, regarding Special Board of Alderman meeting.
There being no objection, I'll accept the communication and place it on file.
Communications been received from Jim Donches, Mayor, regarding veto of Resolution R. 18102.
There being no objection, I'll accept the communication and place it on file. Unfinished business resolutions. Alderman Clemmons.
Thank you. I would move to reconsider R. 18102 amended by roll call.
Motion is to reconsider amended by roll call. Discussion on the reconsideration. With the clerk, Alderman Jettie.
Point of order. Could you explain to us what, you know, what this process, I think I understand it, but I just want to make sure that by moving to reconsider, what we're doing is we're, we're, we're dealing with the mayor's veto and if we vote to reconsider, then that would, if that does not pass, then the mayor's veto is sustained? If it does pass, then we vote again on whether or not to sustain the mayor's veto? Am I correct on that?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah.
So, again, looking for your guidance, is this the time that we discuss whether or not we, you know, agree with the mayor or not, or?
No, not till we, the motion passes to reconsider because it's not on the table. Alderman Clemmons.
Yeah, just to make it clear, so the, a little bit more clear, the motion to reconsider, for all intents and purposes, puts the, the resolution back on the table and then at that point, I intend to make a motion to override the veto and I would think that at that point, we would discuss the merits.
Alderman Jettie.
So, I see Attorney Bolton shaking his head, could we ask him what, why he's shaking his head?
Back on the table is the wrong expression. It'd be more proper to say back on the floor or back before the Board of Alderman for its consideration. Table is where things are put pending further action at another time, so.
I think that's.
It was just a misuse of the phrase, but essentially the explanation was correct.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else? The motion is to reconsider Resolution 18102 amended by roll call. Would the clerk please call the role?
Alderman O'Brien.
Yes.
Alderman Gidge.
Yes.
Alderman Harriet Gathroy.
Yes.
Alderman Dowd.
Yes.
Alderman Cle.
Yes.
Alderman Laws.
Yes.
Alderman Lopez.
Yes.
Alderman Karen.
Yes.
Alderwoman Kelly.
Yes.
Alderman Jettie.
No.
Alderwoman Malisi Goya.
Yes.
Alderman Tenza.
Yes.
Alderman Schmidt.
Yes.
Alderman Clemens.
Yes.
Alderman Wiltshire.
Yes.
We have 14 yeses.
That motion carries.
Fourth reading of Resolution R-18102 approving the cost items of a collective bargaining agreement between the Nashville Board of Police Commissioners and UFPO local 645 professional employees of the Nashville Police Department from July 1, 2018 through June 30, 2022, and authorizing related transfers.
Alderman Clemens.
Thank you. I move to override the mayor's veto of R-18102 amended by roll call.
Motion is to override the mayor's veto of Resolution 18102 amended by roll call. Discussion on that motion. Alderman Jettie.
So, I voted in favor of this. The last time we voted, the time before that, I voted against it. And I voted against it because at that time, the, the contract provided for a allowing employees who were hired after September 16, 2003, to have unlimited sick leave. And just, if I, if you may allow me to explain, my understanding is that prior to that, the, back in 2003, as the mayor had explained, the, the city was trying to get, or reduce the amount of sick leave that employees could, could cash out upon retirement or death. And, you know, on, on other issues, I, I think I've explained to you, my, my feeling about sick leave is that it's designed to allow employees to take time off when they are sick at us, and, and to be continued to be paid so that their, they and their families do not suffer financially because of their illness. And, and I fully support that. What I don't support is the ability of employees to cash out that unused sick leave. So if, I think if you're sick, you should use the sick leave. If, if you're lucky enough not to be sick, you know, I don't, I don't think you should be able to cash that out. It's like an insurance policy. If your, if your house burns down, unfortunately, the insurance comes in and pays to rebuild the house. If your house doesn't burn down, the insurance company doesn't pay you a bonus for your house not burning down. That's the way I view this benefit for our employees. But, so the city had this policy where employees could accumulate a maximum of 135 days of sick leave, and upon death or retirement, they could cash that out up to seven, up to 90 days. So in 2003, the city made a change and said, for people who were hired before that time, that, that would stay the same. For people who were hired after that, the, the amount that they could accumulate, the amount that they could cash out would be limited to 20% of their unused sick time up to, up to 90 days. And in exchange for that, that limitation, they, they were given an unlimited amount of sick leave. They could accumulate an unlimited amount of sick leave so that if they became sick, as much sick leave as they had, they could use. They were not limited. That was the, not to, not to introduce a volatile phrase, but a quid pro quo. That was the quid pro quo in exchange for limiting the amount that they could cash out. They would have unlimited, the ability to use their sick leave in an unlimited fashion if they were sick. So, this contract that came before us in September increased the amount from 20% to 35%. This is for the employees hired after September of 2003. It increased the, the, the amount that they could cash out from 20% to 35%. And, and, and it, and, and that's why I was against it, because I, I didn't think that, and, and, you know, six others of you voted the same way. And I'm assuming that, that's, that was, you, you had the same reason. So when this came back to us this time, I was under the impression that, that this had been fixed. And my bad, I didn't really review the contract in detail, and I know the mayor talked about it, but I really, I, I didn't review it myself, I wasn't sure about it, so I voted with, with the rest of you to approve it. Now that the mayor has vetoed it, I've gone back and, and looked at this contract in detail, and I see that, that, that what we have before us now, the 35% has been changed back to the 20% that existed before, but it added, not only can they cash out at death or retirement, but they would be able to cash out if they resign, after 15 years of employment, if they choose to resign. Now, I've been, up until now, I won't be any longer, but I was the liaison to the Police Department, and I've heard them talk about how, how difficult the situation they find themselves in, where they've got good people that go through the excellent, excellent training that, that the state police provides and we provide internally, and after they've had some experience with what is recognized as one of the best police forces in the country, they then, you know, find a better position somewhere else, they resign and leave. And to allow them to, to cash out their unused sick time in that situation seems, you know, it, it, it seems like we're, we're, we're not doing ourselves a favor by allowing people to resign and get this cash payout. I would think that we would want to discourage them from, from resigning, and so I don't understand why we would be doing that. So as I look at this, and I, you know, I, I hear the mayor talking about how, you know, if, if we sustain his veto, we'll, you know, we'll be continuing to negotiate with the police. You know, I've heard the police chief talk in, in more detail than ever before about the, about the contract and, and, and the reasons that he's presented, what he's presented. As the mayor says, you know, if, if we sustain the veto, we'll still have the opportunity to explore this in more detail, get more information, and, you know, we're not necessarily, by sustaining the veto, we're not necessarily rejecting the efforts of the chief to try to bring this to a resolution. But I, I think it will, it will keep the, the door open. I, I, I hear what the mayor is saying about, about the, the, the demands on our, our budget going forth, largely because of the health costs going up. I hope that we can come up with some way of, of dealing with that. But, you know, personally, I, I cannot, you know, I, I have to take the side of the mayor on this one and, and, and vote to sustain his veto and, and keep the door open for further negotiation.
Alderman Tenza.
Thank you. And so I, too, when this contract first came around, was concerned about the, the payouts for, for the sick leave bank, and I don't think that's a trend that's sustainable for the city. But as I look at this, this contract now, first, I think these are civilian employees. I think, right now, the Police Department has a tougher time training and retaining police officers who are not covered under this contract. But really, for me, the reason that I think we should just approve this tonight is because, as I look at the, the numbers for what the salary increases would be per year, the difference between a 2, 2% increase for these 16 employees versus a 3% in, increase for the employees which the contract offers them is about $10,000 per year, a little over $10,000 per year. The Police Department's budget is $31 million per year. I think that this can easily be absorbed within the budget, and I trust that the Commissioners and the chief will, will find a way to do that without coming back and increasing their budget more than what we're going to have to ask them to, to the small amount we're going to have to ask them to increase their budget in the future. The other thing I would say is that, you know, the, the healthcare costs are factored into this, that's, the healthcare costs are going to go up regardless of what this contract is. That's a much bigger issue that we need to, we need to work on and tackle, but given the, the limited scope of this contract, I think it's fair, based on, like we said, like the chief said, based on the benefits that other people within the department receive. And, you know, I, I'm sympathetic to the department heads who are in the process of negotiating with, with different collective bargaining units. I think that's something that we've also talked about at the Board of Aldermen, as, you know, how, how we can be more uniform across the board for folks. But again, this contract is not going to fix that, and, you know, we're going to have to, as Alderman Dowd always tells us, we're going to have to take a look at every contract as it comes before us and whether we can afford it. So although I respect the mayor's position on everything, I will still support this contract moving forward.
Alderman Clemens.
Thank you. This resolution is R-18102. R-18102. This came to the Board in 2018. We're in 2020. To say that there hasn't been enough discussion on this contract is just plain false. How, how, how can that be? How can something that's been on the table and back and forth in different reiterations coming to us in different forms and shapes and to the Budget Committee and everything else? How can we say that we, it needs to be discussed more? It, it, it doesn't need to be discussed more. We had a version of it, which I actually preferred, and this Board made the decision to go along with, with the mayor and not approve that version, which is fine. We tabled this, and they came back with a different version. And then even that version was changed on the night that we, we took it up at the Budget Meeting. And as, as my colleague just stated, the difference in price is, or cost is $10,000. I mean, in the grand scheme of a $250 million-plus budget, if we can't afford to, to, if that is too much to ask, then we really shouldn't spend money on anything moving forward. Because if we can't afford 10 grand, then we need to step back and we need to look and really dig deep. But see, I don't think that that's the case. And I'm, I'm saying this because why was one contract which had a 3% raise not vetoed, but this one is? If the problem was cost, then both, the both of those should have been in front of us tonight. So I'm not sure where the, the disconnect is, but I am going to support these employees because they deserve to have a contract. These are 16 men and women that serve this city well, that have been doing their job without a contract since July of 2018. They've been through numerous iterations of this. It's been sitting, going back and forth between the Budget Committee and the Board of Aldermen, and the mayor's office, and a number of different places for years, literally years. Now is the time to act, and I hope you'd all support me in overriding the mayor's veto.
Alderman Cle.
Thank you. I, I think I'm just going to basically be saying a, a me too. And, and I, I do want to echo what Alderman Tenza and Alderman Clemens said, and in, in some cases, kind of what Alderman Jettie said. I, I do agree with what you said about the, the sick leave, and, and that does bother me. I think it's time for us to kind of, if what we want to do is go back to what they had said about the 2003, we, we do need to hold our feet to the fire. But when I look at this contract and the previous contract for the police, what Alderman Clemens said was the point that I was going to make when I first raised my hand, and that this started in fiscal year 2018. When I first heard about this, and I, and the word 3% raise, my hackles went up, and I went, I'm social, social security, and I got a 1.6% raise this year, and that was a big one, because we haven't seen that big one in, in a long time. So part of me was like, well, I'm only getting 1.6, why should they get 3%? But just because I only get 1.6 doesn't mean somebody else doesn't deserve something better and, and more. They're hard-working employees, and there's 16 of them. And if it's $10,000 more, I think every penny counts. So I don't want to say 10,000 is only a little bit of money, because it's 10,000 here and 10,000 there. But I look at it as that we have to do the right thing. For two years, they haven't had a contract, and for two years, we've been going back and forth. And maybe it's only been this past year that we've really been going back and forth, but I think it's time to do it. This contract ends in fiscal year 2022. And I think at that point, then maybe we really do need to renegotiate all of these healthcare issues and start getting straight down the line, and stop playing this game of, well, this union gets it and this union doesn't get it. But in the meantime, let's just move this forward, keep our word, and we said a couple days ago, and I agree with what Alderman Clemens said. I respect the mayor, and I don't disagree with what some of the, the issues that he's saying. And at first, I did say, maybe we should hold off on this and speak to others. What harm would it do? But these people have been waiting a long time, and I think it's time to move forward. So, thank you.
Further discussion? Okay. Well, the, the motion is to override the mayor's veto of R-18102 amended by roll call. Would the clerk please call the roll?
Alderman O'Brien.
Yes.
Alderman Gidge.
Yes.
Alderman Harriet Gathroy.
Yes.
Alderman Dowd.
Yes.
Alderman Cle.
Yes.
Alderman Laws.
Yes.
Alderman Lopez.
Yes.
Alderman Karen.
Yes.
Alderwoman Kelly.
Yes.
Alderman Jettie.
No.
Alderwoman Malisi Goya.
Yes.
Alderman Tenza.
Yes.
Alderman Schmidt.
Yes.
Alderman Clemens.
Yes.
Alderman Wiltshire.
Yes.
14 yeas and 0 nays.
And the motion, that motion carries overriding the mayor's veto of R-18102 as amended. Have a motion, Alderman O'Brien?
Can I have a motion to adjourn the special meeting and by roll call?
Motion is to adjourn by roll call.
Alderman O'Brien.
Yes.
Alderman Gidge.
Yes.
Alderman Harriet Gathroy.
Yes.
Alderman Dowd.
Yes.
Alderman Cle.
Yes.
Alderman Laws.
Yes.
Alderman Lopez.
Yes.
Alderman Karen. Alderman Kelly. Alderman Jettie. Alderwoman Malisi Goya.
Yes.
Alderman Tenza.
Yes.
Alderman Schmidt.
Yes.
Alderman Clemens.
Yes.
Alderman Wiltshire.
Yes.
We have 15 yeas and 0 nays.
And we are adjourned at 7:51. Thank you, everyone.